All right. Six o'clock. I'd like to call to order the Quincy School Committee Policy Subcommittee for Wednesday, February 5th at 6:00 PM. Do we need to call a roll? This is posted as a meeting in the whole.
Mr. Vigoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
President.
Mrs. Hubley?
President.
Mrs. Lebo?
President.
Mrs. Pertios?
President.
And Mayako?
We have a call. We have one item on the agenda. It's the proposed revised school committee policy. School committee policy review for 9.11.5 high school promotion and graduation requirements. We spoke about it a little bit at the last school committee meeting. Mrs. Perkins was making some modifications based on the commentary of the school board. She has an update for us, and then we will have a discussion.
Thank you very much. So since our last school committee meeting discussed the competency determination, I won't agree with all of you again, but I will just like to direct.
She's on. Keep them all on.
It's on, so.
All right. So, oh, there you go. Sounds like it's on now. So I'll just direct your attention to the changes that I made. So we did, I did clean up so that the policy just flowed a little better from some of the old language to the new language. And so you'll notice that at the top, I did just change it to just go right into the competency determination. That's on the first page. On the second page, I did, when I thought something was confusing, I did direct the reader's attention to the areas where they could find more information for that. So for instance, under academic credit for number six, you know, it talks about the significant absences in terms of the CVTE program. That is actually laid out in the Quincy High School handbook. So I just, you know, made that mention there of see the handbook. On the next page, I did add, Mrs. Lebo, I believe you brought this up the last time. I did add the information regarding the waiver for foreign language. So this is the world language requirement. So this is actually in the handbooks at Quincy High School and North Quincy High. So I just added it to the policy. And then in the bottom, the points are a little bit, you know, confusing, might be confusing for people looking at this policy out there that aren't familiar. So I just added a caveat there that says additional information requiring, about regarding required points may be found in the student handbooks for each school because it does delineate in each handbook, you know, that they need 20 points for English or 20 points for mathematics. So that is all actually in the student handbooks. And then under community service, we did have a lot of COVID-19 language in there. So cleaned that up a bit. I did leave in there the class of 2025 because this is the last class that had the modified hours because of COVID. So I did leave that in there. But then all the rest goes back to what was the community service requirement before COVID. And then finally, there was an edit that was raised last time. Again, I think, Mrs. Lebo, you might have raised this, that it's 168 days of school not, and I think it previously said 165 for the seniors. Other than that, the policy is the same. I will just say, in addition, Ms. Pertios, I think you asked for us to meet with the department heads. We did meet with the department heads. We had a meeting last Friday with the department heads, went through the competency determination policy, opened it up for any questions. I did follow up with some department heads that were not able to be there at that meeting and had separate conversations with them. And I also did share the presentation with the QEA president, Gail Cavalo, and had a subsequent conversation with her as well. So we did, you know, collect quite a bit of information, and here we are.
Excellent. Questions or comments? Mrs. Pertios, I will go with the, Mrs. Pertios, then Ms. Perkins.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Perkins, for going to the department heads and asking them. I appreciate that. I'm glad that they're on board. Mr. Guttrow, I did find a couple, as I was reading through this, a couple kind of typo, minor typo type things, a couple of weird capitalizations. And once we set an acronym, just kind of referring back to that acronym instead, just to avoid confusion. So I'm going to give that to Ms. Owens afterward, and we can just kind of clean that up a bit. But I did have a few questions. So on page three, where we have the ROTC credits count for the phys ed requirement, do we also want to mention the marching band except exemption to that as well? I don't know how detailed we want to get into that, but if we're mentioning ROTC, should, are there others additional to marching band in ROTC or?
Yeah, the only two that we use, we will count for a semester of physical education is the marching band in ROTC, and that's because they are both classes. So they happen during the school day, and the marching band and ROTC things are requirements of those programs. So, but yeah, I can certainly add it if that's what you'd like.
Yeah, if that's okay to add that in as well, just to be clear. And then also for clarity, I know we've probably had this conversation before, but just below that area, it has at North Quincy High, students are required to earn 100 points, and then at Quincy High, they're required to earn 120 points. And I know there's a reason for that, but I didn't know if we, again, could articulate it here what that reason is, why? And also, is it worthy of having some kind of quick note on that in here so it doesn't look like it's harder to graduate Quincy High than it is to graduate North Quincy? Just from reading that, it sort of leads you to think that, even though I know that's not what it is. So if you might want to clarify here, and then maybe we could figure out how to do that.
Okay.
Do you want to just speak to why they're different?
Yeah, so I believe it has to do with the CVTE programs.
The number of periods.
The number of periods, the eight periods, a day in when North has.
So it is harder to graduate from Quincy High, so you'd have to take more classes.
That's why I want the north.
Because you could get through.
So yeah, I don't know if it's worth kind of mentioning that. It just, it just seems odd when I'm reading this that it would appear to me that one school would be.
I think you could add something in the other, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I have no idea. Just turn them all.
Yes, your honor.
I think you could add something in there based on the number of periods.
Yeah, because Quincy High School is an eight-period day.
Quincy High has eight periods, North has seven periods. So they, it's against the law to have a study hall across the board, so you have to fill it with stuff.
And then just on the last page, two, one quick question, two, actually, on the COVID-19 pandemic language that you left in. It feels like, so it's saying that students in the class of 2025 should complete at least 10 hours by June 1st, 2023, and another 10, like, we've kind of already passed that? Is there, should we update that and just say, you know? I don't know if there's a better way to say that, but it feels a little out of date to put it like that or to phrase it like that. I don't want to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I agree. I struggled with that when I was, you know, updating this, but because they are technically, they did have to do that, and some students may not be done with it, although we like them all to be done with it, you know, by the, so that they don't have to do community service their senior year. Some students do still have to finish it. So I'm happy to, you know, change it or make it simpler or whatever you think is best.
I'm wondering if it would be good enough to say, due to the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, the class of 25 requirements have been adjusted, period.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Have, the requirements have been adjusted.
Okay.
And then you don't have to get into how much by how many.
Yeah, it just seemed like if we're approving it now to have, you know, by a date that kind of happened in the past already seems.
But I think we just say adjusted.
Yeah.
It's in the handbook, so they know what they're doing.
And then just a very last question. What does it mean on the seniors a good standing area here to say, when it says, as well as fulfilled all administrative requirements and personal obligations to the school? What would be an example of that? What does that mean?
I think it would be like the, anything to do with like things that they need to do for completing maybe graduation or.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Tools.
Okay, yeah, that sounds fine. Thank you. I was just kind of curious about that one. Thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Guttrow.
Mr. Vigoli?
Yeah, it's a question I brought up years ago about phys ed requirements. And we're exempting ROTC because it's a class?
Yeah.
That's before school, right?
I think it's a period during the day. Yeah.
Class during the day too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then marching band is also during the day?
Yes.
Although they don't have marching in the school.
Correct.
They're just practicing their instrument. I just, the athletic teams who put in an enormous amount of time practicing, playing, representing the schools, still are required to take phys ed. A hundred years ago, when I went to North, we were, if we played a sport, we were exempted from phys ed for that particular quarter. And I'm wondering if we can revisit that.
So it's actually a regulation? We cannot. So there is actually a regulation that says that after-school sports teams and things do not count for the phys ed requirement. So I don't disagree with you, but it is actually a Massachusetts regulation.
Maybe they should revisit it.
I agree.
Mrs. Lebo?
And also, Mr. Vigoli, no one takes gym all year anymore? So you can't, that might be the only gym they take.
I know that.
Okay.
Additional questions and comments? Yes. Mrs. Cale?
So we had a little bit of discussion about a couple of things during the week, but the, this is put in place in response to the MCAS because we have, it's timely and we have to get it done and vote soon for the kids that have to graduate this year. And I think we should understand that this can be amended because I'm gonna, I'm kind of projecting that the state might be coming up with some other different requirements and things based on the MCAS vote. So we should know that this is gonna be, is able to be amended, and some of this might be changed going forward based on if they're, if they come to us with some kinds of requirements other than what we have. You know, don't you think, yeah, we might have to look at it?
I think that they're, and they're still in discussions, the state. In the notes from the Department of Education Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, there were, there was discussions about, you know, being able to add other components to the competency determination. So I have no idea what they'll end up doing, but there was mention of like, you know, social sciences and things like that. So whether that will happen or not remains to be seen.
So I just expect that we're probably going to be coming back at some point, maybe revisiting some of this. But yeah, thank you for the work on this so far, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo?
I have one other question. Do we have to, we need to vote this out of committee, but we also want to make sure that we can bring this up at the next school committee meeting. How do we get that? Since we're all here, can we make a motion that this only has to sit on one?
You could do that here, or you could actually just vote to waive your rule at the school committee meeting, which probably would make sense at a general meeting.
Motion to accept this.
I have another question.
Oh, sorry.
Before we take that motion, Mr. Vigoli?
Thank you. I just have another clarification. So is it DZ that has set this regulation about phys ed, or is it state legislature?
I believe it's a regulation from the state. State legislature, yeah. Yes.
I'd like to petition our, our delegation to the State House to revisit this and reconsider it. Coaches are teachers, and it's been proven that coaches spend more time with their athletes during a, during a year than teachers do. So I still think it's part of our, I think it's part of our curriculum, frankly. And the kids who, you know, get home at 10:30 at night and then have to study for a test the next day, I mean, they're putting a lot of time in, and I think they should have some consideration to have a study period instead of phys ed. That was, that was where I was going with this.
Yeah.
So if we could, if we could speak to our delegation and see if they could revisit this at the state level?
If that's the will of the committee, we could do a letter to the delegation.
Mr. Mayor?
I think the requirement may have been initially done by President Kennedy. It might have been a federal requirement at the start of this thing, and then, of course, interpreted by the state. We had this discussion a few years ago.
Yeah, we did.
I remember it. And I think at the time, you're talking about if you play two sports, that's what I recall, but it is a state requirement. What about the Mass School Committee? Is this something we could bring up with them?
Yeah, we could bring it up, put it out as a resolution for them to look into.
I'm gonna, might do that. I'd hit it from all angles, but that would be, that'd be another good one.
You understand my point, though.
I do, I do, yeah.
Again, some of these kids are putting a lot of time in. They start preseason, they go, football, they go after Thanksgiving, and it's a long.
I get it. All my three kids play three sports.
Your kids play, and my kids play, right?
Yeah.
And I used to play.
Sorry?
I used to play.
That was a long time ago.
That's why I can't, that's why I can't walk. Thank you.
So my suggestion would be that we get a copy of the regulation, maybe circulate it to the committee.
Sure.
If we want to introduce modification before the full school committee, we could do that, refer it to committee if it's, if it's in the form of a letter or whatever, depending on our read and discussion that we move that way.
Just for purpose of the public, anything the state does supersedes anything we do anyway.
Correct.
It'll be incorporated and baked into it, but it's automatic.
Okay. Very good. So.
Motion?
Motion as amended based on the small changes by Mrs. Lebo as well as Mrs. Pertios?
Mrs. Cale.
And Mrs. Cale. Yep. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, the policy committee stands adjourned.
And now I would like to call the. Okay, I would like to call the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting to order, and at this time, I will turn it over to Mrs. Papil and her team.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening to the school committee members. We're thrilled to be here tonight. I know it was a request of Mrs. Lebo to hear about the school adjustment counselors and the difference between guidance counselors and the school adjustment counselors. I'm sorry, we're gonna need the mouse or the keypad to, sorry, to change the things. So I'm going to let the school adjustment counselors explain their role and what their experience has been, because it is true for the district to have school adjust, straight, you know, school adjustment counselors in our high schools is a change. A lot of our counselors have, you know, masters in social work or mental health clinicians, you know, that type of degree. So they do school-based, you know, counseling as well as like the academic counseling, the more traditional kind of guidance role. But that role is kind of merged into a school counselor role. But here tonight with us, we have Francesca Quintero, who is at North Quincy High School, and Kara McPartland, who's at Quincy High School, and I'm thrilled to have them both here. They're outstanding counselors. So we started with school adjustment counselors through a grant, so the social, emotional, learning, and mental health and wellness grants that have been kind of ongoing since 2022, actually, 2021, '22. And we did hire school adjustment counselors through the grant initially, but through the generosity of the school committee and the leadership of the superintendent and assistant superintendent, we're able to, you know, fund those positions moving forward. And it has been an amazing thing that we've done for the climate, the culture, the students and families at both high schools. So now I'm going to turn it over to Francesca.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Before we kind of jump in, just want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak with you tonight and allowing us to give you a glimpse of some of the roles and the many hats that we wear as school adjustment counselors. We're going to explore the role and impact of high school adjustment counselors in the school environment. We'll be covering what we do, how we support students, and the positive impact it has on the school environment as a whole.
So the question is, what is a school adjustment counselor? Well, the role is both proactive and reactive, providing immediate support for students in need while also promoting long-term emotional and academic well-being within the school community. As we all know, high school years are a time of significant growth, change for our students. It's a time when they are transitioning from middle schools, smaller middle schools, facing academic pressures, social challenges, personal development, and sometimes emotional difficulties. Our role is designed to help each student navigate these challenges and thrive both inside and outside the classrooms. Each day and with each student, our roles may vary, but our goal is to identify, navigate, and remove the barriers that may hinder a student's success in school. Not all students face the same challenges, and therefore, the adjustment counselor's role is critical in providing individualized support that is sometimes needed. By promoting mental health awareness, reducing the stigma around seeking help, and fostering a supportive environment, we contribute to the atmosphere where all students will feel valued, understood, and ready to succeed. When students are mentally and emotionally well, they're more likely to perform better academically, engage positively with their peers, and become responsible and resilient adults. The role can really be broken down into four areas. Individual counseling, crisis intervention, social, emotional learning and preventative programs, and collaboration between teachers and staff. Francesca will explain the first two.
So kind of jumping into individual counseling, which I think takes up kind of the bulk of our, our role, is realizing that many students that we're seeing struggle with anxiety, depression, peer issues, family challenges, and just your day-to-day stress of being a teenager. Adjustment counselors provide a safe space where students can talk about these concerns and receive guidance. Through one-on-one counseling, we help students develop coping strategies and assist them with school-based functioning. In addition to helping students work through their mental health challenges, school adjustment counselors work with students on achieving their academic and behavioral goals as well. We regularly meet with students on IEPs and 504s and are a direct service that is in their service delivery. Our job is to show them how they can better understand their accommodations and modifications, list in their education plans, and how they can use them effectively in their academic, but also in their social life as well. However, I do feel the biggest contribution that we can provide to our students is building trust and rapport. We create a safe environment where students feel comfortable to share their thoughts and feelings. When students trust us and feel confident being with us, that is when we make our biggest gains in terms of counseling. I always believe that the best counseling is done is when you can build a connection with that student. Going into the next one, crisis intervention. It's no secret that the post-pandemic world has put a strain on the mental health of our students. We are seeing larger numbers of students who struggle daily with mental health. And sadly, many of these students can experience moments of crisis during the school day. As a school adjustment counselor, we play a critical role in the crisis intervention by providing immediate support to our students facing emotional, social, or mental health challenges. We're often the first on the scene to assess the situation. When a crisis occurs due to a traumatic event, peer conflict, loss of a family member, fill in the blank, counselors will assess the student's emotional state and needs to determine the level of intervention. We then provide emotional support. School adjustment counselors offer a safe space for students to express their feelings and work through their emotion response, and to help these students process the crisis in a healthy way. School adjustment counselors will then help stabilize the students' emotions and behaviors during periods of high anxiety and crisis. We help students utilize their coping strategies such as deep breathing, grounding techniques, or simply being a calming presence. And when you have a rapport with a student, sometimes just being there and being a familiar face and a calming face can do unspeakable things. And lastly, referral to outside agencies and providers. If students require long-term or intensive support, such as counseling or mental health services, we often refer students and their families to the appropriate professional. We're very lucky in Quincy, let's thank tomorrow, that we do have such amazing partnerships with Aspire, Walker, Quarry, and Baystate Community Services, which allows us to get our students into counseling much faster without having to go through these six-month waiting periods. So that has been a tremendous help for our students. And also, another resource that we were able to get this year is having a mental health clinician on site at both North Quincy and Quincy High. So having them to consult and work through some of these crisis situations have been, I think, game-changing for us.
Adjustment counselors also play a proactive role by implementing programs that help students develop the social and emotional skills needed to navigate life's challenges by doing so assisting the students to be able to focus on their academics. These programs may include such things as small groups focused on increasing social and executive functioning skills, classroom activities such as open parachute lessons, which may focus on stress reduction and time management, facilitating and participating in mentoring lunches to build up social skills and friendships, organizing reentry meetings after a student returns from a hospitalization to build up coping strategies and to assist that student come backing into a supportive environment. In addition to this, we are teaching students conflict resolution skills. For example, working through a reflection paper, which is completed after a disciplinary action, or by running restorative circles with our deans to address and prevent school-wide social issues. By modeling and teaching these necessary skills, our hope is that the students will gain the confidence and the knowledge to be independent in accessing these skills on their own, which promotes a healthier school environment. We believe that we're helping students understand their emotions and how the impact of these emotions have on their behaviors. The adjustment counselors are part of the amazing student support team who work closely with teachers, special educators, and the deans to assist our students who may need additional social, academic, or behavioral interventions. Their role is very dynamic, serving as a resource for students who may be struggling with personal or academic issues. As Francesca mentioned, these students may come to us as part of an IEP or a 504. However, we frequently receive referrals throughout the year, making our caseload very fluid. During our weekly student support team meetings, we are active participants in hearing of students that may be struggling for a variety of reasons. This weekly process identifies with the assistance of our administrators, school psychologists, special education department head, nursing staff deans, counselors, and often teacher referrals, students that may be struggling due to academic, behavioral, or emotional concerns. These weekly meetings are paramount in deciding how to best support our students and what interventions may be needed, short or long term. These may look like helping a student through grief, providing coping strategies for a test-taking phobia, perhaps providing check-in, check-outs, helping a student organize a binder, make a daily checklist of what to do, learning how to connect with after-school activities or clubs, or maybe just learning how to de-escalate and breathe. We work with students to develop and build up coping strategies for managing their stress, frustration, and challenges that may arise in academic and social settings. Strong communication between counselor, teachers, and homes to ensure a holistic approach to a student's well-being.
All right, so just to kind of summarize in some key points, our work as adjustment counselors extend beyond individual students to the broader school community. A student who feels supported in their emotional and mental health is more likely to contribute positively to the school climate, show kindness to others, and be involved in school activities. The sense of belonging and support can significantly reduce issues such as bullying and absenteeism while improving their overall academic performance. The role is multifaceted and every day brings new challenges, where we assist students in gaining the skills necessary for independence, such as managing their time, staying organized, taking responsibility for their learning and emotional needs, which leads to developing independence. By providing counseling, crisis intervention, SEL programming, and collaboration with staff and families, we ensure that every student has the tools and support they need, not to succeed in school, but to succeed in life.
So you can see on the slide, I don't know if you're going to read some of the quotes or do, people can just read the quotes, but those are actual quotes for, from families and from students about the impact that the school adjustment counselors have had on their lives. And I just have to say, you know, I actually was in on a meeting last week, and it was a student that was out of middle school who struggled. a student that was out of middle school who struggled to get out of the car and to get into school, and really has transitioned really, really well at Quincy High School. And so Karen and I were in a meeting with the counselor, and I just think that liaison and that collaboration, you know, we do these big interventions sometimes, you know, whether we're doing like a CRA, or we're talking about sending the supervisor of attendance out. So that's one big like kind of intervention that we do, home visits or whatever. But once the kid gets in the building, they're going to need somebody to say, you can do this, you know, we're going to build on strengths. Look at, you got here today, we're going to get you through the day. So this is really about building kids up. It's not always, you know, reactive, you know, we're giving kids the message, like you're strong enough, you're competent enough to do this. And they need to hear that because when they're home or they're not attending and things like that, what the messaging is, you're too sick to go to school. And we do not do that model. We do not do a medical model. We do a strength-based resilience model. And I'm just going to say, like Francesca, I can't tell you how many kids that maybe did have a hospitalization because of suicidal ideation, but she's there when they get back, you know, and she's helping them function and succeed and have the opportunity to have positive experiences and to make those connections. And that's how you get better. You know, this is not, I don't want people to think that, you know, it's about kind of joining in the illness. It's really about building kids up, building resilience, helping them succeed, joining with families that are struggling, that just don't know what to do, and moving forward and being positive. So I just think their impact, their collaboration to carry it through has been amazing. So I can't say enough about them. They have a natural rapport, kids love them, it's just such an ease, parents are so appreciative that they know that their child is going to be okay because they're worried, you know, they're worried when their child is having such difficulty, they think they're fragile, they're not going to make it, I can't push them. No, you can push them, you have to push them, and there'll be people in the building to help them. So I just wanted to make sure that you kind of understood like where we're coming from, that, you know, we have an obligation to make sure that these kids get an education and that they succeed, and they feel loved and cared for. So I think they've done a remarkable job. So I just thank you for this opportunity to share, and we'd be glad to take some questions.
Thank you. Mr. Buboli.
Thank you for the presentation. You didn't seem nervous at all. You were great, you really were.
Thank you.
Back when I was in the school system, at the end of Carol Lee's Griffin's tenure, she required the guidance counselors to become school adjustment counselors. I had to go back to Northeast and get my certification. Is that still the case? Is it K through 12 counselors, or is it just the high school that are required to be adjustment counselors?
Well, there's two, sorry, there's two different kinds of licensure. So there was like a guidance license, you know, which is, you know, can be five through 12 or something like that, or elementary. But that's all changed, those are like old licensures, but those people were grandfathered in.
I know it was old.
But there's school adjustment, you know, licensure now, and I think that's really where the master programs are at, you know, that they want you to have like an LMHC and school adjustment, you know, they want like dual kinds of certifications. So it has changed, it is like a more comprehensive model, it's not really separate anymore.
Do we still have counselors at the elementary level in particular who are still under the old?
I don't think so.
Or have we moved forward with everybody?
Yeah, I think just about everybody has a school counseling kind of licensure. But, you know, we've done a lot of professional development around cognitive behavioral therapy, around restorative practices, around, so they do have that clinical piece. And people come with all kinds of different experiences. Karen and I worked for DCF before we worked for a school system, so, you know, we've done a lot of different things. People come with a lot of great experiences, and it's all useful.
Karen and I work together.
That's true. When you were a counselor, I remember.
Correct. Right. Well, thank you, Mara.
Thanks.
Are you good, Mr. Buboli?
This is Cahill.
So I just want to say that having the adjustment counselors is, from my perspective, is really important to have in the schools. One of the reasons, obviously, what you speak about is when the kids are there and having them feel comfortable in school, someone that cares about them, the coping mechanisms, all of that. And, you know, when we were in school, we didn't really have that. And in my work that I do in the day, I work with people in recovery, and a lot of people, you know, floated through school and didn't really have any guidance or direction. So what you're doing here is not just for the benefit of people and the students in school to keep them here and have them have support and, you know, teach them how to deal with some of the struggles that they're having, and you give them those tools to be able to manage. A lot of the people that I work with, one, don't complete school, you know, they don't graduate, and two, they turn to substances to be able to cope with some of these issues that they have. So, you know, I appreciate the work you're doing because I think that it's important in school, but it gives the students the tools that they need to manage all these issues and crises and things that might come their way that they don't have to manage as they, you know, once they go out into the real world. And the other piece is, I think we all understand too, is that you need someone who cares about what you're doing, you know, and someone that you can, and it doesn't help everyone, you know, when people come to me and they say, how many people do you think you help in the work that you do? If we help one or two individuals, we're helping their families and their friends and, you know, their colleagues. So I just appreciate what you're doing, and I think we need to understand that it reaches far beyond school, you know, and it goes out into the community. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hublimer.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you so much for all that you do. So it sounds like, and I imagine it is, a very full day, full week. My question is about the collaboration between the teachers and the staff, and how you are able to work that in with your daily schedule, weekly schedule of being just connected with the teachers. How does that work for you?
So I can just quick, and then, I think teachers are very good at finding time when they want to seek us out. We go up to the classroom, we email, we phone call. If in fact, there's any kind of concern within their classroom, it is a phone call, a walk down the hallway kind of ease to make that connection, to talk about the issues that they're seeing. We also have a process at Quincy High so that teachers have a referral process to that student support team meeting that we can navigate through, and that gives access to our administrators, our deans, our school psychologists, and we can all collaborate. Because oftentimes, what happens is if one teacher's having that concern, typically there's others that that student sees throughout the day that shares the same concern. So that flow chart that we use is, if you're having this problem, this is the process, and we can all talk about it at student support team, and then the information travels back to the teacher. But I find it most helpful just to have those one-on-one conversations. Teachers have prep time during the day and are just so willing to give up that prep period if they're concerned enough.
Yeah, and I'd say the same. I feel like there's been great collaboration at North, and obviously, we want to make sure we keep the students' privacy and share what needs to be shared. But a lot of these teachers want to know, like, what's going on with the students in my classroom so they know the best way to handle and approach, you know, their teaching. So they're always willing to collaborate and meet. I'm always willing to collaborate and meet because I think that's how we best service a student, where we're all working on the same goals together. So whether, like you said, it's an email or finding each other during prep times, I feel like that's kind of more of the easier part because everyone wants to make sure we're working together and not working against each other, you know, so we can best service the student.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Perdius.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here. Thank you for all the work you do. It's so important to our students and to their families, so thank you both very, very much. So you each have about 1,300 kids in your building. How many would you say on average you see regularly? I feel like everyone in that building could benefit from meeting with you, right? I mean, every teenager could have, has some level of stress and anxiety.
No, it's true.
And you're two people in two buildings with 2,600 kids. So how many do you see, and what's your bandwidth, that type, kind of where are you at on that?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, our caseload is so fluid, you know, as a student may have achieved reaching their goals on an IEP or a 504, they learn the skills, maybe by junior year, they don't need me as a service, then I might pick up somebody that's struggling. But to give it a number, I would, I mean, per, a year, 150-ish?
I'd say, yeah, that's, because a lot of times too, like you said, a lot of those students will pick up those skills, and they don't need you as much, but a relationship has been established. So sometimes you'll just see them coming in to check in. And it's amazing, sometimes you think at high school level, you don't need a check-in, check-out, but every morning, I have the same steady flow of students that check into my office the first thing, and before they leave for the day, they check out. So I feel like even when they are thriving in their school environment and in their life, they still kind of find a way to check in and, you know, use you as a support. But I would say you're right.
And I also think the work that we do with the deans with the conflict resolution, whether it be restorative or reflective practices, that ebbs and flows within the building, and certainly, we're a part of that in sort of helping the students navigate, you know, whether it be a restorative circle to figure out, you know, how to best approach a conflict within the building, or if it's a student that's returning from a suspension that you want to reflect with to say, you know, now that things have, the dust has settled, is there a way that we could have handled it differently? Do you have a connection with anyone in the building that you could have gone to? So it really ebbs and flows, so it's hard to, you know, put a number. But Francesca and I sort of talked that, we, about 150. But then we also have the support staff that also have connections within their caseloads. We just have more flexibility to make those regular, you know, weekly check-ins, you know, maybe Monday, Friday check-ins, maybe check-in, check-out. We have more flexibility in our schedules than the student support team.
Got you. Yeah, and the reason I'm asking is more just, do you feel okay with your caseload? Do you feel like there, if students, if additional students are having additional needs, do you have room in your day to meet with them? Are you having trouble meeting all the students you need to meet with? That's kind of where I was sort of.
So it's always, I mean, it's challenging on certain days, but certainly very fortunate to be in the position that we're in and we're able to provide those services. I think it's challenging, but I do think, you know, Francesca and I are very flexible and we can change our schedules around so often that we're able to meet the needs.
Okay.
And I do want to point out, we do have like school-based counselors too from partner agencies, that has been a real help. You know, obviously, if you ask anybody, they'll say more is better, but, you know, they do a really fine job. Like, I don't feel like kids are getting, you know, falling through the cracks. You know, could we do better? You know, of course. But we're always building, you know, the support network, you know. Just this week, you know, at a middle school, we have someone from Maria Dross who's going to do free counseling there with some kids and do some groups. So we're always trying to get more.
Yeah, no, for sure. My next question was going to sort of be, do students know how to access you? Is that put out there? I asked, I checked in with my freshman, and he had no idea that you guys were there or that that's someone that they could go to. So how is that communicated to students, and do you have the bandwidth to have, you know, if it's better communicated to students, do you have the bandwidth for increased students to come to you? That's kind of where I'm headed with that.
I think we'll always try to, if there's a student in need, like you were saying, we'll always make sure that we are flexible and able to meet each of their needs. Like, almost kind of have this like triage sense in case, like you said, a crisis occurs. But I think it's something that we're always, like you said, it's very fluid. So the way I guess a referral would go is through the SST, our student support team meeting. And so students that have been identified either by their teachers or their counselors that could use additional support, that's kind of where it comes through, and that's when we kind of get the referral of, this is a student that you should be meeting with more frequently.
Got you. Okay. And is there a plan to expand this, or have, is it so successful at the high schools that we're planning to expand this to the middle schools if we can? Are we looking for that opportunity? Or it feels like the middle school kiddos would be similarly, have similarly been affected by COVID and the stress and the anxiety, you know, as I'm sure you're seeing at high school.
Yeah, so we have had an expansion through like Walker Therapeutics being, you know, present in our middle schools, and Maria Dross, as I said. We are partnering like in a lot of different ways with Bay State Community Services as well. The counselors at the middle schools, there's at least, you know, three counselors at every middle school, so they do a really nice job. They do school adjustment. I was a middle school counselor. They don't have the same demands as the academic, like the high school scheduling and the college, you know, application. So like the duties are different at middle school, so I feel like we're really well-staffed at the middle schools. And I think they do a really nice job. But, you know, if I can get more partner agencies, you know, through grant opportunities or whatever to, you know, do the school-based counseling, that would be ideal.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Miss Epp.
Thank you. I have, thank you very much, this was really helpful. I think it's wonderful, I love the proactive piece. I'm a little confused about one thing. I've heard IEP and 504 three times in your discussion, you're not just serving IEPs and 504s.
No, but.
I wanted to make that clear.
No, no.
That you serve everybody across the board. And it's not like it's a child-friendly thing. You're not out there so people refer them to you, which is great. And your caseload is high, but nothing like what a guidance counselor has, so they couldn't possibly do this work. They couldn't possibly do this work. But just having that team of a school psychologist and the adjustment counselors, and those are two different roles for sure. I mean, they complement each other, but they're two different roles. And the deans and the guidance staff is really, is really great. So I'm thrilled that you're here. I think it's a huge need. And I think if there's 150 kids, and to Mrs. Cahill's point, not just the student and his family, but his whole community. You know, if you can help have somebody hang in there and get through this when it's so difficult for them, the impact is enormous, it really is enormous. So I thank you for your work, and I'm so glad we were able to bring you on staff.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You are all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll have Ms. Quinn present our high dosage tutoring initiative.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you an update regarding our DESI grant that offers high dosage virtual math tutoring to select fourth and eighth graders through Imagine Learning. This targeted tutoring builds prerequisite and foundational skills to set students up for success with their current grade's core content. There's one tutor for every four students, and the groups meet for 30 minutes, three times per week. For fourth graders, the four focus area topics include place value, fractions, decimals, and multiplication and division. For eighth grade, the options are the Real Number System, equations, graphing, and geometry. Seats were limited, so we had to carefully prioritize our greatest need. Atherton Howe is our only elementary school. Due to many other schools having just received the ST Math Grant, which required their fourth graders to use that program for 30 minutes, three times a week. And for middle school, we selected Broad Meadows, Point Webster, and Southwest. Ultimately, each of those four schools were awarded 16 seats. The first 12-week cycle from October to January was so successful that DESI reached out to ask if the schools would be interested in expanding their number of seats. As you can imagine, everybody said yes. As a result, for Cycle Two, the total number of seats increased from 64 to 108 across the four schools. Based on student needs, some students from Cycle One are continuing with a new focus area, while new students are being welcomed into Cycle Two at each of the schools. Next, I'd like to share a video of Point Webster and Southwest students during their tutoring sessions. You'll notice that each student is equipped with headphones and a microphone, allowing them to communicate directly with their tutor. They also have the option to type their answers in the chat, which many of the students chose to do during our visit. Since it was the beginning of Cycle Two, they were still getting to know their tutor, so the session was noticeably quieter compared to the end of Cycle One, and we definitely had some camera-shy students when we were there. But let's take a look. But let's take a look.
Hi, my name's Gabby Davis and I'm part of the Math Tutoring Club. Well, today we did math integers and like how we use them in the real world and how on like a number line, on the right side, that will always be greater than the left side and like positive and negative numbers.
I'm calling Clifford, eighth grade math teacher at Southwest Middle School. And the students that have been involved in the tutoring program have been noticing just a lot more confidence in class. A lot of kids that kind of, you know, started out the beginning of the year, really struggling with a lot of basic stuff, have really improved drastically. So I've noticed in their last map testing that they just took mostly, all of them went up about 10 points or so. And then on a personal level, my daughter is involved in it at her school and her math has improved tremendously.
My name is Michael Boyle and I'm in the Math Tutoring Club. And today we were learning negative and positive integers and using them in the real world. I do think it's helping me because I get a better understanding of what I'm doing on tests and even in the regular classroom. My favorite thing about the tutoring is when they put a link in the chat and we have to compete to who answers the most questions.
Thank you. At the beginning of each cycle, the students complete a pre-assessment on the chosen focus area. The assessment consists of 10 multiple choice questions worth one point and one open response question worth four points. A similar assessment is given at the end of 12 weeks. All 16 fourth graders at Atherton Howe worked on multiplication and division and showed an average increase of over 20% from their pre and post-assessment. This slide contains the results of the eighth graders based on their focus area, including only students who had completed both the pre and post-assessment. For the topics of real numbers and linear equations, we observed an average improvement of over 14%, while geometry, the increase was over 34%. And this final slide highlights some of the praise from the tutors that was shared with the principals. We can clearly see a connection between student effort, attitude, and their outcome, with some of the students improving by 50%. In addition to the great progress and increased number of seats in the current cycle, DESI has reached out once again, this time inquiring if we have any other schools interested in participating in a shortened eight-week session, starting after April vacation and ending just before our spring testing. My response was yes, and I'm currently working with principals to explore the possibility of offering this opportunity to a few more schools. And I look forward to updating you on how that develops in the near future. And that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mrs. Perdios.
Thank you for the presentation. It's great. It's a great opportunity that the kids have for just, you know, to go over those basics as Mrs. Clifford said in that video. It's good to see that she's seeing it in the classroom, the effects of that. So I'm seeing on the graphs, the average change. Are we still seeing kids in this cohort that it's not helping for? Or like some of the kids were having 50% growth. So were all the kids making some progress at least on this? Was it helping for all of the children?
Yes, for the most part. There were some students that were, attendance was an issue. And we definitely didn't see the growth that we were hoping for if that was the case.
Okay. Just making sure it's impactful for all the students, yeah. Okay, that's great. Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Guttrow.
This is great. How long is the grant? Is the question?
So this is for this year.
Just a one-year grant.
Yes, but the hope is that it will continue next year. I actually just filled out a survey about like, would we be interested if this was an option to do next year? And obviously, I said yes.
Is this a new grant program through DESI?
This, from my understanding, they actually did this last year. And I think that was the first year. And there was some changes because last year you had the option to do it as like a before school or after school program. And they found that that wasn't, I don't want to say it wasn't helpful, but they found that attendance was an issue in terms of the students actually attending all the sessions or a majority of the sessions. So this year, the caveat was it had to be during the school year. So they changed it in that respect.
And so they allowed the number of seats to increase, meaning the funding increased as well?
Again, I don't know how many they had to begin with. So when I.
I thought it was 16.
When I applied, I asked for a lot more. And then we were told what we had. So then we made do with what we had and we prioritized where they were going to go. And then through that, I received the call that some schools were not going to go and do Session Two for whatever reason. So there was some openings. And then we gladly accepted those and expanded with the students that we used.
And is it a competitive grant program whereby every year you could apply? Or do they offer it to you and you choose? So can you apply to this?
Yes, yes, we would be able to apply. If they, if they offer this next year.
Yeah.
Which it sounds like they are, but nothing definite has come out, like no paperwork or anything like that, we would be able to apply again, yes.
And is it competitive in the nature that you're, you know, there's 10 districts get chosen and 100 apply? Or is it if they ask you, having worked in the federal government, I know that there are some grant programs where there, if you apply, you get, and others that are fiercely competitive?
I think we might be somewhere in between. I'm not really sure in terms of, I just know that, again, being new to this, I asked a lot of questions. And when I asked like in terms of like how many we might get or, they definitely lean towards the most need. You know, districts that have a greater need are going to get it over if they can't, if, you know, they have a certain amount of money, if they have so many districts apply, it would go to the greatest need.
And is DESI just looking at the improvement or are they looking at the attendance or?
They're looking very heavily at attendance, yes. They actually, if students were not meeting the attendance and were, and were missing, they actually were removed from the program.
And we monitor that and so what is the attendance for these classrooms? What would you say it was for the, over the course of the session? 80% of?
Oh, yes, 75 and over, yep. 89% I think was for the most, Noah Sparr.
So is that, is it looked upon favorably by DESI over a certain percentage?
Absolutely. And I think.
What's that percentage?
The fact that we were able to correct that, you know, in terms of like making sure that we had students that were going to show up and be, you know, their attendance was good as well, that we were able to get the seats, you know, more seats.
Assessing or is this something that you think you'll seek the money next year to? I mean, do you already feel like it's been a success?
Oh, I definitely do.
So therefore, we're going to continue to apply it?
Absolutely. I mean, the students are feeling, from all the teachers are saying that they, they're seeing a more confidence in the classroom. And, you know, just having the kids feel better about math is, you're halfway there.
That's great, yeah.
And then they're seeing it in terms of, you know, depending, different schools pick the topics differently. Sometimes it's, we've already covered this and we know that these students need some more help. Others are, you know, this would be really great if they could get some front-loading on it. And then they see it in the classroom that way. So it, a lot of different ways to look at it and use it. And it's great that we have that flexibility within the schools.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Wu.
Thank you. I was just curious if there's any type of teacher material that goes along with it that we're giving to our teachers while the students are using the program?
There are no materials that go with it, but we do have a list of like the standards that are going to be taught and the skills that are going to be taught, like a master sheet. So that when they decide on which group of kids are going to like, say, do fractions or do multiplication and division, they can see what is going to be covered.
Okay, so the teachers know like how they're, how it's going along with them? So they have the opportunity to review the program while the students are reviewing the program? Or did they get it in advance of knowing what the students are doing?
Not so much review what they're doing. No, they definitely do not have that in terms of like what the actual lessons are, but they do know the topics that will be covered.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
So just to clarify for me again, so DESI approved this Imagine Learning program and so it's approved by them, how they are the curriculum and everything. And where do the kids, the 30 minutes, three times a week, where are they taking that time? Are they taking it away from another, you know, where are they fitting in that?
Great question.
30 minutes.
So again, middle school, it was a lot easier because they have the student support block of that 30 minutes pretty much every day. So that's where it went in. It was a little more challenging at Atherton Howe and a little more, you know, creative scheduling to do that, but they made it work.
Yeah.
Yeah, they felt, again, I obviously checked in with them after, like as we were coming up on the end of Cycle One. And all the principals and the teachers felt that it was helping their students and very much wanted to, I mean, you can see two of our schools doubled the amount of students that they were servicing because they felt that it was working.
Well, I think, you know, I think we mentioned it before when we were doing the big brother, big sister thing. When you're bringing it to the students instead of the students having to go and get it, it makes a difference and who participates, right? And then the other pieces that, what I like about this too, because of the trend, you know, with online learning, is with kids, you know, being really comfortable on a computer with someone, learning with, you know, again, back to what I do during the day, trying to get people to get their headset GED, for example, they have to do a lot of it now is online. And you have people who are not comfortable with online learning in any capacity and they just can't, they just don't want to do it. Whereas with these kids, if they're really successful with integrating, you know, online with the instructors and the material and everything, I think it also helps them in that area going forward, not only with just the math, but even in that, in that component, you know? So, yeah, love it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I have just a very brief question. Mrs. Cahill asked my main question. Same tutor, same group of students?
Not necessarily, no.
Not necessarily.
No, so depending on, I think, just schedules and because, again, not 100% sure that last year that they had multiple people doing the services. This year, Imagine Learning is the sole provider of the tutoring. So depending on, I think, what the topic is, the time, that kind of thing, depending. Because when the students said goodbye to their, I was in a couple of schools as they finished up Cycle One and said goodbye to their tutors, they weren't even, they didn't know, you know, they didn't know if they were going to have the same one depending on what their topic was for next time. Because the students can, could change up too. So I might be in a pod the first time doing multiplication and division, but next time two of us might be doing fractions and the other two might be doing geometry in another pot of four, so.
But some, there's some continuity through the beginning part, I imagine.
All 12 weeks that were the same tutor. Yes, yes.
I can see why that was.
Yep, during that 12 weeks, they're on one topic, the selected topic from beginning to end.
And I heard our QEA members say that the math scores are also improving for these students?
Yes, yeah. They've said, like I said, it's been great for them to get this targeted instruction that really focuses on, again, the principals and the teachers sat down, they looked at the students, they looked at where the needs were, and then based on that, you know, created groups of four students for a certain topic.
And they're not coming out of their math class for this?
No, no, they're absolutely not.
That is great, yeah, especially for kids who really need math. This is great. I, you know, I think it's very, very new. It's had some promising results across the country, so I'm really hoping that this could be an answer to help our kids to be able to be able to access the curriculum when they get to their regular classes. So it's a great option, I think, to Mr. Gutrot's point, we don't know yet. You know, the state will be assessing whether they think it's worthwhile and probably doing a couple of years' worth of that to see. And then we'll be assessing too because.
Right.
We have to make sure that the kids can progress in our classrooms.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much. Everybody all set? Thank you very much. It was very informative. And now we will be going, we're going to talk about the superintendent's goals for the 24, 25 school year. These were given to us before in the fall and they went into subcommittee. And I know some of us gave the superintendent some, some suggestions.
Yep, we made those changes.
And the superintendent made those changes. So if, and I saw the ones that I suggested, so anybody, do you want to go through this at all? Mr. Molye, do you want us to just?
It's fine if you just want to review it. It's essentially the same. There was one correction made that you made from Mrs. Lebo, or recommended that we add the behavioral health information in, which I did. And aside from that, the goals remain the same as they were presented back in October.
Yep. Motion by Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Perdol. It's got to be. Yep, and all in favor?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that ends our meeting for tonight.